Can I now invite the speaker from the Tari Community Facilities Trust to speak to this?
No, sorry, Dave is speaking first. We've got four people speaking within the...
Welcome, Dave.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you, Mayor Cowan. I too will stand because we of hobbit-like stature tend to get lost in the crowd. Look, it's with great pleasure that I'd like to open the batting on behalf of the Trust. Partly in deference to the colour of my hair, I'm the patron of this august group, but also, I think, partly at the invitation which I received, which to my mind reflected the absolute need for this district to think outside the square and consider an aquatic facility that would serve the best interests of the widest possible group within the community. I'm no expert in geography and demographics, but I am aware that there is a particular demographic out here which relates not only to the ageing population, but also to the younger age groups that are represented in the wider Tari community. And I've been well aware, experts will follow me and talk about the nuts and bolts of this proposal, but I'm well aware of the concept that is being put to tonight in terms of four pools, each with a commitment to a variety of members of the community. And I think that for me is a very, very important selling point and something that I thought long and hard about when I accepted the invitation to become patron of the group. Some of us in the room will be old enough to reflect on the debate that took place over 50 years ago when the Moana Pool was being mooted, and the anguish then that the community expressed, and also the anguish that the council at the time in receiving a proposal for the first ever indoor Olympic pool in New Zealand, in fact, only the second in the southern hemisphere. And people thought then that we were pandering to the wants and needs of the competitive elite. And now, in this day and age, we realise that the Moana Pool is still regarded as one of the best pools of its kind in the country, if not Australasia, serving the wider community in the manner it has, mindful of the fact there have been several iterations to its design and development. I see here the proposal being put by the Trust as serving the needs of the very young in terms of the importance of learn to swim and water safety. And we in New Zealand can't hold our heads very high when we talk about the safety of our children in the water. We have some rather startling statistics to answer for when it comes to drowning in the international comparative fronts. I see that in the older age groups, there's an opportunity for therapeutic use of aquatic facilities, a warm pool with its benefits to non-weight-bearing exercise and general health and fitness to the community. So I think that end of the demographic is also well served. And in between, you've got certainly the competitive arm. You've got learn to swim programmes which would attract a coach and in fact return significant revenue to, I think, a well-organised aquatic facility such as this. And if you want to benchmark this proposal against other aquatic designs, I think you should think of what's happening in Queenstown at the moment. In terms of bells and whistles, that's the Rolls Royce. I think what the Trust is promoting here is a very well-thought-through, all-embracing facility that I think will serve the greater Tari community. And it's for that reason that I was willing to accept the role as patron. I feel very privileged to be here this afternoon to present the first part of the Trust submission. And I urge the council to give this its greatest thought and consideration because I really do think this will serve the community well and take some of the load off the Moana Pool at the moment. Thank you. Thank you.
Right. My name's Martin Dillon. I think you've got a copy of my submission. I'm a member of the Tari Facility Trust, as well as a member of the Moskew-Tari Community Board for the last 18 years. I was also a member of the DCC Aquatic Working Party for the two years that was in session. Council, I'd like to draw your attention to numerous reports, strategies and policies that you have and relate them to this very important project for the benefit of all our citizens. Each now a vision, one of the world's great small cities. The following strategies and plans that are relevant to this issue: social wellbeing strategy. The council's vision for social wellbeing in Dunedin is Dunedin will be one of the greatest small cities. We will be a city with connected people, cohesive communities and quality lifestyles. The social wellbeing strategy focuses on what Dunedin, what makes Dunedin a great place to live. And as such, is a document which aims to cater for all members of the society, rather than a particular subset of the community. This strategy sets out pathways for Dunedin City Council to take a leadership role and improve the social wellbeing of Dunedin residents. Underpinning this strategy is the concept of citizenship and what being a citizen of Dunedin promises and requires from us. There are high levels of participation in recreation and leisure activities. Dunedin has a great natural environment and quality recreation facilities. And of course, this is the heart of the issue. We don't believe there is quality leisure facilities. Encouraging people to make the most of these facilities will lead to good health outcomes as well as other social wellbeing benefits. Changing demographic profile of New Zealand, the older 50-plus age groups in the demographic profile are the major growth areas, and they have different expectations for aquatic facilities, being temperature, access, covered and water depth. The aging population profile provides an opportunity to increase utilization in some facilities during non-peak times and therefore address in part some of the cost issues associated with operating aquatic facilities. The city has slightly older population compared to New Zealand as a whole, 13% compared with 12. And many of the older people residing in the flatter parts of the city, such as Moskew and Southend Eden. Another plan is get Dunedin active. The benefits of physical activity and for physical and mental wellbeing are well researched and documented. Increasingly, we understand that the positive effects of an active lifestyle extend beyond these and include improvements in social connectedness, learning, educational achievement, innovation, productivity and more. These benefits cross age, gender, ethnic and social economic boundaries. Physically active communities are prosperous communities who experience enhanced wellbeing at both an individual and community level. Three of the goals. Goal one, facilitate and advocate for urban and rural environments that foster more active lifestyles for all Dunedin residents. Promote the enjoyment and benefits of being physically active and how Dunedin residents can access opportunities to be active. Create more opportunities for our future generations to engage and choose an active lifestyle. Second framework. An active city. Dunedin's people lead active, healthy and enjoyable lifestyles. So what are our priorities? A city with a range of recreational, sporting and leisure facilities and opportunities which are accessible to all. A city with range of recreational, sporting and leisure facilities and opportunities which are accessible to all. We promote and encourage sporting recreational events and opportunities. Transport objectives from the transport strategy. Dunedin's urban form and design creates high levels of accessibility to key destinations such as healthcare, education, recreation and employment. Personally, over 60% of our citizens require a change buses twice in order to access Moana Pool. However, there is a direct bus from Southend Eden including Camberstone, Green Island, Fairfield, Abbotsford and Moskew. This is exactly what the transport strategy is trying to create, a more effective public transport. The vision for Dunedin's transport system will mean safe and socio-inclusive access to services, employment, education, recreational opportunities is available to all residents and visitors. Public transport and active bags are popular, well-utilised and safe. And hopefully, one day, a citizen's will be able to cycle through the tunnels. There's the national facility strategy. There has been mentioned before and also in the information that produced for consultation with the LTP. I would like to clarify some misconceptions. One mainly that a target does not require additional pools. However, based on the benchmark as used, a population's head of 30,000, ratio of 35 people per square metre suggests a minimum of one 500 square metre pool. Just to clarify, Moana Pool is classed as two standard pools. Now, a population centre of 100,000, a ratio of 60 people per square metre implies a network of three to four standard-sized pools. This will total around the 15 to 2,000 square metres of pool. Dunedin City has a population of 122,000 and has two standard-sized pools. In summary, the aquatic centre is more than just a pool. It's a leisure destination with facilities for the whole family, for all our Dunedin citizens year-round. This project ticks all the boxes, and if council was serious and committed to achieving the outcomes of these strategies and policies, then we must have a commitment and a leadership from council. What's the point of having a game plan and not following through with it? Imagine the outcome if the All Blacks, after practicing the game plan, then on the day ignoring it. What would be the outcome? You, as our leaders, have only one, can only be one outcome. A vote for a four-pool aquatic centre in Moskew to be funded.
Hi, I'm David Murphy. I've lived in Moskew for the past 28 years and raised a family here. I've been involved in swimming, competitive swimming and master swimming all my life and have been a coach down at the Moskew Pool on occasions. But I took the role from the Tari Community Facilities Trust as design team leader. And the rationale I want to present today was for the four pools design. Perhaps one of the most crucial aspects of the concept design in the 2014 feasibility study is to create a solution that meets the needs of the community now and for the next 50 years. After engaging with and listening carefully to feedback from the wider community demographic, it soon became evident that a key goal in creating the design of the four pools was to be their functionality and ability to meet those needs. With the current technology available to us today in creating this design, there was a focus not only on the overall construction cost, but also the ongoing annual operational expenses. We believe this is a functional and cost-effective solution which is also based upon other actual pool designs around New Zealand and in particular the South Island that were built over the last five years. Pool facilities such as the Rangirra and Rollaston Pools, the new facility that opened in Ashburton last weekend, and the Caroline Bay Pool at Timorua. Our design also incorporates some of the lessons learned from these other aquatic centres, thereby allowing us to gauge the best functional design for this facility in our community. We included a toddler's leisure pool that makes the introduction to water a safe and pleasurable experience for toddlers and their families and also as an intergenerational meeting place for not only toddlers but right through to teens as well. This pool has the highest casual usage rate and therefore would provide a healthy income stream. A learner's pool we also included, as New Zealand has one of the highest drowning rates in the developed world. Every year, our children miss out on the opportunity to learn to swim as access to pool space is very limited in the city area. With the love of water ingrained in kibrik culture, learning to swim for a child is as important as teaching them road safety or wheels. This pool would have a very high year-round usage and would create a substantial income stream to the facility. Children's sports such as flipperball, entry-level water polo is a growing team sport amongst children, and it promotes fun in the water and is not only overly competitive, but one that we are unable to meet at present because the need has high weightiness. A 25 by 25 main pool cases for all ages ranging from competitive club swimming, master swimming and aquatic sports such as water polo, underwater hockey, canoe polo, triathlon training, as well as non-weight-bearing recreational fitness and aqua aerobics programmes. A hydrotherapy warm pool is a requirement for our increasing aging population who will serve not only as a means of physical exercise for the seniors, but also for those recovering from sports injuries, post-operative surgical rehabilitation and pain management, as well as providing aqua aerobic fitness programmes. The specific design of four pools is about inclusion and community wellbeing, serving not only as a place for physical exercise and recreation, but for people and families connecting with other people who are the social fabric of any community. It's about addressing important issues of isolation, loneliness and social wellbeing for the marginalised. Given the councillor's recent commitment as the DCC to step back from further investment in fossil fuels, it would seem a logical progression as responsible citizenship to give consideration to the development of local community infrastructures. Such an investment will effectively reduce the overall carbon footprint on travel now and for generations to follow.
Good afternoon, councillors. Shaun Pontt, speaking on behalf of the Tari Community Facilities Trust. I was born and bred in Moskew and spent many days sitting on the bleachers in the old Tari Pool, getting dripped on from the condensation during our swimming sports. So I'm here to talk today about sort of the general capital costs, our request for council to consider allocating $750,000 worth of funding to progress the design and also to talk through some of the pros and cons with regards to proposed staging of the development. So I think it's conclusive that Tari needs a new aquatic facility. It's been concluded that various, through various reports, so there is no question that there doesn't need to be a new pool on the Tari. It's been confirmed over the last 10 years through various reports. The question comes into the scale of the development and the type of the development and the specification of the development. So as David just mentioned, as part of the exercise through the consultation with the community, we requested sort of feedback around what the wider community needs as part of an aquatic facility. In doing that, we did not do that in isolation of understanding reality or without any consideration of any capital cost or expectation on the rate payer. We were very, very careful to make sure that we, when we identified facilities through the lower part of the South Island, we identified facilities in areas and in towns that were of a similar scale to the Tari, had a number of different types of facilities that they could choose to swim at, and we focused in on the Selwyn Aquatic Facility for those reasons. If we looked at the Selwyn Aquatic Facility in Rollaston, very similar sort of population base. If we looked at the five-kilometre catchment area of Selwyn, it's a lot smaller than what the five-kilometre catchment base for the Tari is. We benchmarked operational costs, we benchmarked attendance numbers, and we also benchmarked facilities and capital costs. We met with the designers of the Selwyn Aquatic Facility. We met with the end user and operator of the Selwyn Aquatic Facility to understand from them what worked well, what didn't work well and what they would do different. That led us into looking at alternative options for swimming pool construction. We reviewed the design and we looked at areas of the design where we believed we could do things more efficiently, which was keeping things on a single level as opposed to having planned and equipment underground similar to what Selwyn were. And also helped us focus in on a key area in Moskew for the location of the facility by looking at leveraging off some of the existing infrastructure that's in place with regards to car parking. So those benefits in themselves, we're talking about benchmarking costs, they've been taken into consideration. We purposely didn't go out there and look at facilities likes of Queenstown. We knew the facilities in Queenstown were more expensive from a construction rate than what we were looking at proposing at Tari because it wasn't relevant or it wasn't practical for the Tari community to have that type of facility in Moskew. We've got Moana Pool over the hill. So we wanted to make sure that our facility didn't compete for Moana. We wanted to make sure that our facility was modest in scale and size, and that's what we've come up with with regards to the overall design solution. Our capital cost for achieving that is circa $14.4 million. And there has been discussion from council that would suggest that council's figures are in excess of $1 million, more than that $14.4 million proposed that we've put forward. We haven't yet had the chance in a lot of detail to sit down and discuss those discrepancies, and we see that as one of the first things on the agenda for the next stage of the development. As far as the proposed staging of the development goes, yes, it is possible to stage development. Yes, you can do it, but when you're looking at aquatic facilities, the primary cost is in the upfront infrastructure required to operate a pool. So when we're looking at putting a pool together or constructing a pool, it makes sense and you would put in all of the infrastructure, the filtration systems, the water supplies going in, the power supplies going in, the backup boiler plant, everything like that as a sunken cost upfront, whether you do it for a three-pool or a four-pool complex. The primary difference around capital cost and where you'd look at staging it would be extending the size of the pool hall and how you'd physically go about doing that and what pool you'd drop off to start off with. So if we looked at, you know, where the various pools are, the question is, do we need a hydrotherapy pool? Do we need a learner's pool? Do we need a leisure pool? Do we need a lap pool? So I think from our perspective, the community tells us they need everything. What we're proposing is no different than what's happening in every other small town in the country. Selwyn's got the same facilities, Rangirra's got the same facilities, Ashburton's got the same facilities, Timorua's got the same facilities. We're not proposing anything different that hasn't been done before and it's fair and reasonable to expect in a small local community. With regards to the proposed budget for progressing through to the next stage, the Trust has requested $750,000 to take it through to the next stage. That $750,000 sends a clear commitment from council that you want to see this happen. You're driving this. It acts as the catalyst for the Trust to go out and start their local fundraising campaign. Without that commitment, it's going to be very, very difficult, if not near impossible, for the Trust to go and progress to the next stage of fundraising, which is critical to the success of this project. The $750,000 is being derived by looking at the total design fees for a project of circa $15 million, $14.4 million. Typical design fees for a project of that scale of this nature would be about 10 to 12% of the project cost. So in order to get to a stage which we're saying in order to give council with absolute certainty around end cost, functionality and operational expenditure and revenue, that would require us to get to what's referred to in our industry as a completion of a developed design stage. So that's the stage immediately prior before we start doing all of the detailed technical drawings. At that point, it gives everyone the opportunity as the first go, no-go point to say, yep, this is as we proposed it, it is looking like we've all promised. The Trust has got some commitment behind them there from the local community and they've got funding pledged so we can actually demonstrate that we're all on the right track. The cost to get to that point is generally around about 50% of the total design fee. The cost to get to there is not a bought-of-cost. If the project proceeds, which we're confident it will proceed post that point, that money is spent on progressing the design. If we just fluff around and allocate another $100,000, $200,000, you know, in 12 months' time, we're going to be no further progressed than what we are now. We're going to be sitting here debating what's the design going to look like, how much is it going to cost? Because we won't have been able to have sufficient detail or effort put into the design to answer those questions with any real certainty. So in order to progress to the next stage, we're asking council to seriously consider allocating the $750,000 and including that at the next stage of the LTP. It then provides a catalyst for the Trust to go through and commence their fundraising. That's it from me.
Irene Mosley, I'm the acting chairperson for the Tari Facilities Trust. Glad to thank you for coming out to Moskew. Welcome to this part of the city. And what you've heard already is a pretty good summation of how we're feeling about things. We've got a high caliber, high standard of leaders who are willing to become involved with this Trust. We've had a lot of expertise given to us for nothing. And our concern is that if this is stalled for much longer, the price that it's costing everybody that's involved at the moment is going to put too much pressure on them and they won't want to continue. The hours and hours of volunteer work that has gone into date, and it does have an impact on everybody's families and everything else as well, as you all well know. We believe the fundraising target is realistic, and I know there's dissenters that say we have no proof. Well, actually, we have more proof that we can raise that money than they have that we can't raise that money. And, you know, but it's a snapshot in time. And at the date that we did that study, we believe it's possible. But another 12, 18 months down the track, the nature of this community will be changing. Moskew is in a unique position that we still are a service centre for a rural hinterland. And traditionally, rural people understand far better the need to help themselves and city people on community projects. The longer we leave it, the more sections that go into the town part of this community that's going to change that balance and it will be harder. We also know that the next generation coming through are not nearly as philanthropic as the older generation. And if you're wanting money out of that next generation, it's much more the theme of the day than the greater community good. So be aware of that too. I'm asking you to look at this as being no different to your transport strategies and your transport projects. You get joint funding from a government level to partner with those. Or instead of having government funding, this one is getting community funding. And if you also think that every dollar that's given from the community is eligible for the government rebate on your charitable donation, it means in a way you are getting central government to help pay for this pool, and that's something that's often forgotten. We know that the city has funding constraints, but anyone who's read the Rich Dad Poor Dad book knows the best way to create a culture of financial independence is not to say we can't afford it, but to say, what do we need to do to make this happen? And we've done that and our communities responded. There is money in council coffins to take for spending, so what we need to change is the mindset to ensure that where the money is being planned to be spent is really in the best place and where the community is asking for it to be spent. This complex, when opened, will see over 200,000 people a year through the door. And over 1,000 people have submitted on this project, and not all of them are from the Moskew part of the city because many in the wider city understand the importance of this as well. This project has no similarities to the stadium and we shouldn't be comparing it. Watching from a distance while the stadium project was happening and having been in community development for over 20 years, I can assure you there is no similarities. This has been driven by the community and the grassroots from day one. That wasn't. This is where the community are putting their money where their mouth is first. You know, this is a win-win situation, not what happened there. And our city parent, they continue to be punished for years in the future. We can learn from the mistakes, but we shouldn't stop doing things just because we're scared something might go wrong. We've listened and we've researched the concerns that council have raised about the staging and the other guys that have covered why that's not really viable in a building sense, but that it is viable in the sense that we can stage the project over a couple of your financial years to mean that it gives you more chance to find that money. When we're asked about water usage of the pool and people seem concerned the infrastructure may not cope, a pool complex of this size uses around the same amount of water as one 400-cal dairy farm or 90 homes with four people living in them, so it's not huge. We know we've had industry out here in the past. You've got 1,600 new sections online. The impact is less than that. The level of goodwill and free expertise and volunteer ass that this project has had is huge. I think you all know that councils are not necessarily the best organisations to manage community projects. Communities can tap into goodwill and support that a council just does not get its effect. It's not our place to tell you how you should fund this. It's their job to tell you this facility is needed sooner rather than later. We do know there are potential possibilities in the way it could be funded and we have ideas of how we can keep costs down. We're currently working with the physics department at the University of Itagoo around new innovative ways of keeping the overhead energy overheads down and would like to get into a lot more of that. But there's no sense us wasting our valuable spare time on a project that we haven't got the green light for. So we're asking today for you to give us the green light, that we can go out and seek this money and if we can find what we want, we say we can do, you'll give us the go-ahead. But we're also asking for that 750K so that we can do this once and do it right. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene. Now, I'm going to, with your permission, throw it over to the questions. So councillors, questions. Councillor.
Just, and this is outside of what you've been talking about, but you may know. Do you know anything about what the people who would be using the pool would do on the alternative? Are they currently using Moana? Are they currently going out and having a drink? Or are they teenage people causing trouble? I mean, what's the alternative thing that they would do? I mean, what's the alternative thing that they would be doing? You've said what, how fits in with our strategy, but there might be other strategies that it also fits in with because of the alternative not having that.
Yep. There is no alternative. At the moment, for six months of the year, there is nowhere to go swimming other than Ocean View in Brighton, which isn't, isn't ideal. We've also, someone asked us if we'd look at Chatsford as a possible way, they've got a small pool there, people thought maybe hydrotherapy could be covered there. We've had indication back that that can't happen because that's a hundred percent privately owned by all of the people that have a licence to occupy in that facility, so that's not an option. Teenagers, the fascinating thing from my perspective, when we were researching this, when I lived in the Clutha district, I knew where to go and find the teenagers and ask what they thought. Moskew has nowhere that, that kids go to congregate and, and behave socially as a community. There's also nowhere that all ages can mingle and this is what this pool would do. It would be a chance for the young ones to be there at the same time as the older people and it would be a true community facility. And in the four or five big capital projects I've been involved in, what we thought at the start has panned out. It involves talking to a number of people and getting a sense of where the community sits and also some key people, what they're prepared to put in. And by averaging that out and working out what that your lead gift would be, which is usually about ten percent. If I use the Clutha Recreation Centre as an example, because I was very involved with that, five million total project, lead gift was three hundred thousand and then so on down. So in a whole project, the neurosurgery campaign, there was actually only about eight hundred key gifts within that whole project, even though it seemed like everybody was giving lots and lots of money. It's very staged, very calculated and usually accurate. So when Comptons did that study, they said, yep, seven, seven and a half million should be reasonable. And another indication is they wanted to, they, they've indicated they'd like to do that project for us. They only take on projects they're sure of, of being successful in. And then if we have to wait another twelve, eighteen months, we would have to look at it again, you know, and that's why it's important. You've got to act while there's a passion out there, while people really want to see it happen.
The first part of our process, which we were looking at was, you know, asking the public what they, what they wanted from that. That's the model which we developed up to determine a, a revenue profile and also a capital cost profile and an OpEx number for it. So we haven't broken it down into the detail insofar as saying, you know, what's the capital cost for a, for a two-pole option, relatively simple to do? What's the OpEx cost for that, relatively simple to do? But what's the, what's the public giving in goodwill for that component? That hasn't yet been tested.
One of the things, Richard, is that the average cost per visit, I think, was three dollars.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. A hydrotherapy pool will be four minutes. So, well, you're charged with full price. So in that respect, that lifts, that, that should lift that bottom three dollars twenty. Because it's a hydrotherapy pool can be used off peak times and therefore the space is available, you are going to get a greater impact from people coming to use the pool. And as David said, there's more than just sitting in the pool. There's a lot of reason for a hydrotherapy pool. So you actually are creating an income base by having that pool.
I think from, from all of the discussions we've had with various operators of aquatic facilities, you know, the fundamental pools which create revenue, the major revenue is the hydrotherapy pool and the learner swim pool. And, you know, when you look at the lane pool, it's a facility that's there that's needed to suit, you know, the needs of the health and wellbeing for the general public. The hydrotherapy pool, without that, it doesn't promote the best opportunities for creating revenue. And you've already got the infrastructure there, you've already got a facility in Dunedin, which is at the end of its economic life, that needs to be replaced in, in the near future. So without that, Dunedin needs something. We are better to have that, that on the tari. The question is, you know, do we drop out the, the, the leisure pool? Or the leisure pool allows the facility to be active and vibrant seven days a week, you know, three hundred and fifty-four days a year, three hundred and sixty-four days a year. So by taking that out, that sort of cuts out another, another key component. And with that leisure pool, it's not intended to be a grandiose hydra slide or wave pool like Moana. It's a very modest, lazy river, you know, water fountain, paddle jumping pool for the kids to play in whilst they're not, you know, downtime, while they're not having their, their learner swim programmes or what have you. So that's, that's, I suppose, the key thing.
Could I add also, that the moment you remove one of those niche commodities, shall we say, you're thinking of altered pool temperature, because each one of them has a slightly different requirement. The therapeutic pool will be hotter, the, the lap pool will not. Those that use the Moana pool will understand the benefits of that, together with the, the dimensions of the various pools. And they wouldn't actually serve individually the wide range of, of facility use that, that's intended.
One final question. Is, it's been suggested to councillors that, not suggested, says, that the, that in effect, what we've got would meet the needs, except that it's tired and old. And I'm looking for some understanding of why I should reject that judgment.
Okay. The, the strategy is worked on the whole of Itagor, two hundred and eighteen thousand population. And based on that, we don't need any more pools in Itagor. However, that's based on, like I said, my other pools basically is effectively two standard pools. However, the other pools is Alexandra, Bell Clutha, Cromwell and Queenstown. And Omur is in Itagor. So those pools are clumped together. Now, if you take out the population and say, well, what Dunedin is, is a hundred and twenty-two thousand people living in a community. That requires three to four pools. Basically what's happening is Alexandra, Cromwell and all these places, their pools are basically over catered, you could say, for their population. For instance, right now at the moment, if I wanted to go and have a swim, my own pool's full, I've got to go to Bell Clutha. Because we've got no pool. The population base of a hundred and twenty-two thousand needs three to four pools. We're suggesting, if we go ahead with this, Dunedin will have three pools. Four, because the new aquatic centre is regarded as one pool, standard sized pool. So that's all we're saying. If you take the whole population of Itagor, two hundred and eighteen thousand, we don't need any more pools. Because all the other centres have got their pools and are basically over catered for their population base, which leaves us out on a limb. Dunedin City is up to four pools requirement, we've only got two. This will only give us three and that's their benchmark.
Counselor Wilson.
What was the impact on the existing memorial pool consultings that were there with the new pools? I mean, Timaru would replace an old one, I think. But did, did, did it draw a lot of people out of those pools in the area and reduce their usage, your chances?
No. Short answer, no.
So increase, increase.
Yeah, it tends to. If it does happen, from the research that I've done, if there's an initial drop-off in another pool, that is very short term and then it goes up and above. And the fact that you've only got a pool here for six months of the year, you're going to get bigger usage just here without anything else.
I mean, that's something that we, we had a number of discussions with the city aquatic team around, you know, are there likely to be adverse or negative impacts on, on Moana? And, and the feed, specific feedback we got from those discussions were, were no, we're already, already, you know, you know, well exceeded our capacity now. We can't get everyone into the pool that, you know, that needs to be here. So, so from their perspective, the answer to that was no. This should be seen as a supplementary facility as opposed to something that's going to compete.
The only other question I had is about location, which is the only negative really that insufficient about for, I mean, it's a bit financial, but that is the site, it was the site moved pretty early on in the process. Is it one, if there are few technical or and or savings from infrastructure that you're not aware of yet, that could be, presumably there's no operational reasons why you went to that site as well? And, and how important that site is compared to.
Well, yeah, the, the, I did a site investigation, is that there are a number of points you look for, is public transport access, access for people on bikes, walking, central hub, around sporting facilities, and of course we had the existing car park, which maybe have to be increased. But remember that that park, Memorial Gardens was only established in nineteen seventy-five. Prior to that, it was, it was a paddock. Okay? So they had volunteers and a water hose up the ground and planted grass. Just to give you a quick background, Memorial, it is no, it is not a memorial to anything. It was originally Memorial Park. They built the stadium, they couldn't come up with an idea for a name, so they called it Memorial Stadium. Then in nineteen seventy-five, they decided to increase the guards, because originally the guards were just directly behind the stadium where the Rose Garden was. In nineteen seventy-five, and I got cool with my mates who did the water hose, ran down to them, it was a paddock and so they extended it. So there is, there is a motive, people out there about some of the trees. They are not indigenous, most of them are exotic. And from my own experience on trees, trees grow, so you can replant trees. So the site, because we've got a good access to it, it has good flow and it's, and it's close to the schools, it's also close for bus transport coming through and out to Red Avenue. And it is apart from about a half dozen residents, which need to be consulted with and need to be designed with, it doesn't affect anyone else. It is beside the library, it is part of our hut of, of the town. It's beside our playground, the, the playground trust developed and spent twice as much money as the council was allocated. So it's all sits in within the area, that's part of the town.
If I can just add some of that as well, I mean, part of, part of what we looked at there, and Martin mentioned was about the safety, I mean, it's a fantastic access point to that stadium, you know, you've got some pretty significant road crossings there going out onto Gordon Road. The other, the other ability to leverage off that infrastructure, you know, not only, you know, we've got the car park there, but it helps revitalise a reasonably aging, soon to be dilapidated asset being Memorial Stadium, which, you know, having a facility like this right there beside it, you know, assists council with helping revitalise a zone in the city as well. So there was a number of, number of good, good factors there that we considered when we looked at the other sites, you know, Seddon Park. Unfortunately, you're going to have people that don't like it, no matter where it's going to go. People are going to oppose it, whether it be at Seddon Park, Brooklands Park, Wunga Tui, on the main street of Gordon Road. There's always going to be people that approve a location and disapprove a location. In my, in my mind and in the trust's mind and the majority of the community's mind, that the Memorial Park site is, is the best site, you know, it's in and amongst all of the, all of the rest of the community and family sporting activity. So it creates that sport cluster hub.
And so, Irene.
David Murphy, you talked about facilities and your research on that. Ashburton Aquatic Facility opened on Saturday officially. What was, what process did they go through?
They went through a similar engagement process around the, the wider community of what they needed.
Just with community engagement?
I think they had a very experienced aquatic facilities manager in Steve Prescott, who's had a, a very long history of these types of facilities and was in Moana Pool for quite a number of years. He's seen a lot of international facilities for various communities. And in consultation with the local council, that's what they've come up with as a design. And I think to answer Kate's question too, you can never assess accurately what the, the needs will be in say twenty-five or fifty years' time, as they change, as skateboards go out of fashion, or perhaps not. But I think generally we've got to provide the functional needs carrying out for the community that we live in.
What was the cost of their physical weight?
Fourteen and a half million. And that was for the pool complex, not for the associated gym. And I think in some ways, if you look at the concept, design that we've put forward, we've got a superior design, although, you know, this is phase two, which is, and that's why I think we could almost call it a carbon copy, is the experience also of the likes of Naylor Lark, who constructed both the Wallaston Pool and the Ashburton Pool, that we've taken advantage of.
One final question, when they, before they started construction and went through the process of tipping it off, what was the budget they were working to? What was the cost?
Look, to be honest, I don't know that question. I never got that indeed, but we're hoping to get operational costs, which are just as important going through.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that's.
Ah, yes, it did. And they had very credible architects in Warren and Maun designing the pool. So there was a lot of design pictures, based of course on what they did with the Wallaston Pool. By saying the Ashburton Pool is a little bit of an improvement, I dare say, you're replicating something.
Because they had a steam room, I was just, when you were talking, I was trying to find the, the steam room and.
The steam room is a spa, by the way, significant spa pool. It's interesting, we are talking to Craig Motley at Timaru, that he's had a niche spot for people that want to come at the end of the day, that are not involved in aquatic sports and swimming, but the, what he calls the chilax area, the steam, the spa and the sauna are vital parts of the facility and that they attract a premium charge for people at the end of the day that just want to come in and relax and have social interaction.
So for fourteen hundred million, they got five pools, plus the steam room and spa pool?
Exactly, yes.
We probably, Ashburton's probably not a good one to benchmark against though, because the whole complex was thirty-two million for everything. So the likes of the Selwyn Pool that was fourteen-nine and similar would be a better one for you to look if you wanted to do some independent research.
Absolutely. Actually, we should firstly kind of acknowledge and thank for the work that's done.
I missed the meeting you had and probably had council some longer. But my question is, it's all along similar lines of councillor Thompson, and it's around the ability to raise the local funding and I think it's a fantastic target to have. Because we're both in this together and actually making the work, we've obviously got through budget. So what ability has the community trust and the community to be nimble and flexible about the timing of the project? So in other words, Irene, if I may question you, you talked about a window of twelve days, not necessarily for locals to contribute. The reality is that's going to be true, that will, council will be able to work those time frames. So what ability has the trust and the community to be able to sell the concept of giving it a more extended timeframe?
Yeah, soon is always better, but we understand around five years would be good for you guys, I think. It, I mean, you want to raise your money in, in no more than eighteen months, because otherwise people get tired. That's why, you know, thermometers on walls to show how the, it doesn't work, because it just looks like you've stalled. A lot of that type of fundraising, capital fundraising is done as pledges, so you get the pledge from the person rather than the money. So that allows a wee bit of flexibility. Any funds that were given would go into an independent account, so in the event that council let us down, we would be able to give the money back.
I was basing it on council doing a great lot, but having a, a longer lead-in period and being able to keep the momentum of the community so that that money should come in by around.
Well, we, we would be working hard, once we get the green light, to get that money within the eighteen months. And as that works, we would know, we'd be saying, this is a three to five year project out from there or whatever. You know, like the Recreation Centre in Clutha, it was, it was similar in that we spent seven years in total from start to finish. That didn't stop the money coming in, but we knew it was coming and we're having the conversations. We've just got to have something to work for. You can't work to fresh air and sunshine, you've got to work to a project.
That concept is really sellable to people?
Yep, it's within reason. I mean, you know, if it's going to be ten, fifteen years, well, no, no one's going to sign up for that. But if it can be, you know, capital projects take five to seven years, I think most people know that, as long as they know there's going to be something at the end of it.
Counselor, Jose.
Irene, you may have any statin that I'd just like to comment on, and I do have a But you said something like councils are not necessarily the best people doing these sort of projects. And as one who sat all those years through the development of the. And as one who, um, sat all those years through the, um, development of the stadium, I can say I'm absolutely delighted you're not asking us to be involved in that, uh, in the, in the building project. Um, my question really, and it's, it's sort of been answered, um, along the same lines as councillor Noon and Thompson, but you did say that you had proof of funding. And I'm just wondering if that's, uh, was sort of political license?
I'll correct you there, I have more proof that we can raise it than the naysayers have proof that we can't raise it, that was what I said.
All right, well, can you give me a little bit more, you know, rea-, or some reassurance that you are able to raise enough funds?
I think I've answered that question, to be honest, I, over here, you know, I've got no more to add to it. It's, it is a science, it is doable. The likes of Comptons don't say that something's going to work if they don't believe it can. And at the end of the day, there's got to be a bit of faith there as well and belief in what you're doing, and that's what sells it. The way you raise money is by asking and making it a community project. It's, um, I can't, I can't give you more than that, because no, we haven't got seven and a half million in checks in the bank, but we have that indication from people at what level they, they are prepared to give. And if it doesn't take too long, there's no reason to suggest that that won't happen.
Councillor P. Um, yeah, my, my questions have largely been answered, um, but I just find in terms of location, you made a case for, for the one proposal. But, uh, you open to other ideas, other options?
Of course. Thank you.
Councillor Adams.
A few questions here. It's been said that Selwyn, Rollaston and Ashburton basically have recently built pools that have been designed and that what you're proposing here is essentially a carbon copy. Is, is that pretty much what I get that right?
I mentioned that about the Ashburton Pool in particular.
Yes.
Although we referenced at the time, uh, the Rollaston Pool, because the Ashburton Pool hadn't been started at that stage.
Okay, so the Ashburton Pool is essentially what it is you want, the carbon copy of that is basically what might we propose in the year?
I think it would be a good thing.
The, the bench, the benchmark pool is the Selwyn Aquatic Facility, so when we're looking, which, which, I haven't been to the Ashburton Pool, um, but the Selwyn Aquatic Facility is what, is what we've benchmarked and what it cost.
They've been put by a pool steward?
No.
Nala Love.
Oh, sorry, Nala Love, okay. Given that Nala Love has built them and that they've already been designed, and that you want a carbon copy, why do we need three quarters of a million dollars to pay for a new design when a carbon copy is not too far?
The site-specific design will need to be done, so whether we build it on the Canterbury Plains or whether we build it on the Tari Plains, there'll be site-specific conditions that are different. Um, the site sizing and location of a site is slightly different, the pool orientation within a complex is different. Um, the, the plant and equipment required to serve as a pool in Moskew is different than what the plant and equipment will be required to serve as a pool in Canterbury, because of the different climatic conditions. The heating system, which we proposed in Tari, is a different heating system than what was proposed in Selwyn, because we're proposing a, um, more energy-efficient ground source heat pump solution, where they've got just electric heat pump solutions. Um, so yeah, so although it's a carbon copy, the concept around what a pool hall should look like, what type of pools should go in there, and what size pools should go in there, it's identical. Um, the, the other primary difference is we're looking at non-conventional pool construction, which is an area where, um, we believe there's significant cost savings to be made through capital costs through the information, the research we've done. Um, so where they've gone traditional concrete and tile pool construction, um, techniques, we're looking at new, um, not new, but, but commonplace international, um, stainless steel type construction of pools, which is a, um, arguably a superior product, faster to build, cheaper to construct and less maintenance ongoing. Um, not to be confused with the stainless steel pool at Queenstown, which is also a stainless steel pool where they've had issues. It's a different system to what's, um, being constructed in Queenstown.
I think also, um, is the, that seven hundred and fifty thousand is part of the fourteen point four million.
Correct.
It's not additional, so it's not fourteen point four million plus seven hundred and fifty thousand, that seven hundred and fifty is part of the fourteen point four.
It's a process that's required for any type of construction.
I understand that, I also understand that we're very similar arguments regarding the initial funding for the state. It was all going to be part of it. Um, Mr. Don, you mentioned that, um, it's well established that there is a need for the pool here, it's not just a want. And you talked about the number of people and the number of pools, Moana being essentially two of them, that are required. And that you said that most of the, um, information that's available suggests that it really is a need here rather than a want. However, when I look at the, uh, a national survey of pool requirements, if there were going to be another seven pools built in the country, none of them would be built down here. They'd be built in places like Auckland, where there really is much more need for it. And this is from people who don't have an axe to grind about any particular area. So in terms of your claim that it is an absolute need and not a want, have you got any particular information that you can give us? Surveys, whatever, that show that the need really is there, I mean, it's, it's one thing to say that there isn't a need, it's another thing to actually have independent, uh.
Yeah, well, I think, I, I might have explained this, but if you go to the national strategy, aquatic strategy, that clearly shows that Dunedin needs three to four pools. Because they benchmarked it on the whole of a Targa. So it's a geographic population rather than a densely populated population base. We have got six pools in a Targa, two of them are here, that's right. So if you take a population base, we are three to four, based on their benchmark.
My final question is, um, given that there's some misunderstanding about the money in the DCC coffers, um, and a lot of people don't seem to realise that depending on how you look at it, it's either a two hundred million dollar hole in the DCC coffers or a six hundred million dollar hole. Um, given that there is this extreme funding problem that we have, how do you suggest we decide to let the Moskew community project, which is essentially what the pool is, take precedence over the South Dunedin Pool project, Library Project, Community Project, which they've been calling for, for twenty-five years plus now, and which is going to serve a lot more people than the Moskew community project?
Um, I could put it back to you, councillor, that that's why you're upfront.
You're the leadership of the, of the city here.
So you're saying in fact that what I should do is I should vote, given that there's probably a choice between one or the other, I should vote to do the South Dunedin one first, because there are more people going to be affected there, and they've had their hand up on it.
That's your decision.
Could I just add, um, to one point there, around the needs, and is there any evidence to suggest that there actually is the need as opposed to the want? Um, council have commissioned ten years with reports on this, on whether there is a need for an aquatic facility, um, or expanded aquatic facilities. Every one of those reports over ten years has concluded that there's a need for another or a new aquatic facility. Since that report was complete, the Tari Swim Pool is going to be, you know, it's at the end of its economic life. The city's now faced with the question, do we invest more capital into maintaining an aging dilapidated asset that is not going to achieve an outcome? We're still open seven months of the year, this one week. Do we invest our capital into assisting, um, the DHB or whatever the arrangement there is for prolonging the life of a dilapidated hydrotherapy pool? So each one of those answers, if we take both of those pools off-stream, which they will go off-stream in the near future, it's not a matter of if, it's when they go off-stream, because they're both at the end of their life. We're then left just with Moana Pool. Moana Pool is far, you know, it, it can't cope with the demand it's got. Your own staff tell us that it's oversubscribed, we haven't got enough space at the, at the existing Moana Pool. So for council to rely on a national aquatic strategy report without understanding the local facts, I think it's, it's, it's not very wise. What we do know is there is a need, we have got dilapidated pools. By closing these pools, it's only going to compound the issue even further if we don't replace it. So there is a need for a pool, it's not a want.
Can I, can I pick up on that? Um, have you done projections for the demand that you would anticipate for the hydrotherapy pool, the demand of use?
No, not, not specifically for the hydrotherapy pool.
No, the, um, one thing I have done is spoke to Val Cleetha last week, because they spent three million three years ago turning their complex into it. Their complex was built nineteen seventy-two pools, uh, three years ago, they turned it into four pools. And, uh, the comment from the managers, they wish they made the hydrotherapy pool bigger. It's what brings in the people and is, uh, an earner for them. And like someone here said, um, you know, it's bringing new people to aquatics that come for the relaxation side, but then generally start to use it as a physical activity as well.
What we also know through the research with Selwyn is that we know that people travel for forty kilometres in Canterbury to go to the Selwyn Hydrotherapy Pool. And, um, through the lessons learnt, sessions that we have with the operational staff, their biggest success at the Selwyn Aquatic Facility was putting in the hydrotherapy pool. So we, that's what we do know.
Just to explain my question a bit, I wondered whether any predictions you had done or any expectations you have of demand were premised on your clear view that the city physiotherapy pool won't be there in three, four years' time. Now, you have every right to believe that, but there's another stream of thought that says, if you put enough money into it, and the system, um, has a sustainable life ongoing. So I'm interested in, that's why I'm interested in what your projected demand is positive of.
All right, if you're inferring maybe we thought the pool would close down and we've added that into our projections, no, we didn't do that. We, we were assuming that that would remain as, as the inner city, um, hydrotherapy pool.
Right. Okay, um, secondly, have, have you teased out the operating costs that each of the four pool components contributes? And I, I don't know the answer to this myself, but I assume that different kinds of pools have different operating costs, and have you looked at?
No, what we've looked at quite simply around our operational benchmarking was looking at the actual operational costs for, for Selwyn, um, which is based on the same water volume, same pool temperatures, um, same size pools and what have you. So we haven't broken it down to say this is the cost of managing a hydrotherapy pool. Um, where we get a bit, bit tricky to do that is, is obviously shared, um, operational costs across pools. Um, but the answer is, yes, you could probably break it down to an energy cost premium for having a, you know, the, the increase in water volume per pool, but we haven't got to that level of detail yet.
Thank you.
Councillor Law. Yeah, look, I, um, I've got a couple of questions, the first one is, in view of what you're saying about, uh, retrobuilds costing a lot more, so I'm thinking for the next point. Is it not, um, I don't want to spend money at the council, I've heard this is all we point out, we haven't got, but what would be the cost of putting in a, um, spa and maybe steam room as well? Do you have any idea for that? Just on the, 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 obviously the Moana Pool, putting in the air spa.
The, the, the capital costs of this facility have included a spa pool in it, so there is a spa pool as part of the, the hydrotherapy offering, um, within that fourteen point four million, as there is it, as there is at Selwyn. Um, but we haven't priced in the, the steam room.
Ashburton have done that, uh, the fourteen and the half million. One of the things they mentioned was, is that the premium charge incurred, uh, really added greatly to the revenue and, uh, they saw that as, uh, very beneficial to the whole complex.
Yeah, I mean, I'd imagine you'd be talking tens of thousands as opposed to hundreds of thousands.
They're charging eleven dollars just to use the spa pool and the, uh, steam room without, uh, usage of the other pool facilities?
Councillor Starnes.
Just like to follow up on the staged construction, I'm just asked a question of how scientific has the information been to suggest that it's not practical, accepting that there will be a premium, uh, it's not practical to stage it. And, and I just want to contact that, contact that with saying, you'd set off to build a four pool complex in terms of its infrastructure, because you'd be silly not to.
Yes.
However, you, you would, the saving would only be the remaining roof and building and the pool structure.
Yes.
Um, and I'm just wondering whether, if, has it been discounted or is it still an option that would be looked at, um, as the design was done? Given that the, the financial constraints we've got in getting all of the money together, if they're ended up with a three or four year gap between getting two of the pools up and getting the next two of the pools up, that does have some, some benefit potentially.
Yep.
Would have to be cost perceivable, it matches up with it, it's still likely that.
There hasn't, there hasn't been, um, there hasn't been a lot of science put into it at this stage. However, what I would say is the arrangement of the pool design in the pool hall has been carefully thought through. So the question is, if we did look at staging it, how could we stage it, what would we stage it, what would we put on later? So the obvious answer to that is, do you put the hydrotherapy pool in later, or do you put the leisure pool in later? Because we're going to need a lane, lane pool, we're going to need a learner's swim pool. Um, the way the pool hall's been designed, once again, through discussion with, um.
Would you like to see a photo of what Shaun's talking about, would that be helpful, we can put it up there, it's sitting here ready to go.
Yes, it would be useful, here you have the money. So, so the, the question here is, what do you put in later, it's the leisure pool and the hydrotherapy pool? So what, what's been designed here through, once again, discussion with the Dunedin Aquatics team, plus lessons learnt, is the proximity of that hydrotherapy pool to the changing room facility is critical, and that's more for the elderly people coming in and out of the pool without having to walk down the whole length of the pool. The proximity of that leisure pool, um, with the main entry is critical, and the proximity of that learner, learner's pool with the, the main lap pool is critical. So by staging the development, what do you do? Do you hold off the twenty-five metre pool? Um, so that's, that's the whole reason around why it's difficult, not just from a capital perspective, yes, it's possible, but what do you put in later?
PowerPoint behind you, I'm Serenitas of the Moskew-Tarot Community Board and our Chair Bill Feather. Firstly, the board would also like to express our gratitude to the mayor and councillors for coming out to Moskew this afternoon, uh, making, facilitating access for our local submitters, so thank you. Um, progressive investment. It's coming up. As indicated in our written submission, we, the board, acknowledge the council has an unenviable task of juggling the fiscal demands of debt reduction, infrastructure renewals, progressive investment with acceptable rating figures. However, we, by majority, with Maurice, along with many others here this afternoon, wish to highlight the need for progressive investment in relation to aquatic facilities for the city. We believe continued investment in new infrastructure and amenities is crucial to progressing our city toward becoming a great small city. The current status, it's no secret across the city, we have aging aquatic facilities that are being used at capacity. You've commissioned numerous reports over recent years, each report concluding that firstly, a new aquatic facility is required, and secondly, that the Moskew Pool is nearing the end of its economic life and is no longer viable for future investment. So we believe there is the need. It's also no secret as to why our local aquatic facilities are so well utilized. New Zealanders typically love the water and will jump at any opportunity to get in a boat or go fishing. But swim off the coast of Otago, not so popular. So that, you need to consider that in looking at national guidelines as well, it's different to go swimming off any of the coasts, even in the Northern South Island versus Otago and Southland, access to water, Christchurch North, is far more friendly, if you like. So we in this part of the world need adequate access to pools for leisure and to ensure drown-proofing through Learn to Swim, not to mention for the purpose of exercise, sport and rehabilitation. Furthermore, if we're to look at the user benefit. Furthermore, if we look at the user benefits and the cross-section of population impacted by aquatic facility investment, with projections over 250,000 visitors a annum, this is substantial when considered relative to other projects that are well funded in this draft long-term plan. If you look at users of aquatic facilities citywide, not just for the Moskyl population, then that is substantial when looking at the likes of the South Dunedin Community Complex or the Porta Ballot Road and infrastructure improvements or the likes. We believe that is substantial. Yet there's currently no funding for aquatic facilities. As an aside, why are aquatic facilities treated differently to museums, galleries, libraries and the likes where there's no entry fee? So the Moskyl Taro Community Board believes there needs to be funding in this long-term plan for aquatic facilities. This citywide problem needs addressed. And as we've just heard, the Taro Community Facilities Trust and the Moskyl community have put up their hands and offered to partner with council to solve this problem. Partnering with council is not unfamiliar territory to our community. We've already demonstrated our can-do attitude in supporting a number of major community amenities, including Coronation Hall, the playground at Memorial Park, both amenities highly regarded across the city. In fact, the original Moskyl baths and major alterations since such as the roof and the provision of heating and filtration wouldn't have been possible without community funding support. We are certain that this offer of a partnership from the Taro Community Facilities Trust and the Moskyl community to build a 4-pool facility is the most effective use of our city's limited investment funds, not only meeting the needs of the local population, but easing citywide capacity issues. Why a 4-pool facility, you ask? Why does the trust and the community only appear interested in partnering to build a new 4-pool facility? I now hand over to our Chair, Mr. Bill Feather, who'll provide further detail here.
Thank you, thank you, Sarah. A lot tonight's been spoken about 4 pools and so rather than go into any great depth and reiterate what has been spoken about, I share with you a couple of slides that might show and give some background to the demographics of our area and also look at those, through those demographic groups, the groups that would use each of the 4 pools or a combination of those 4 pools. So in each slide. Okay, and the community demographics as per the 2013 census, the total New Zealand government authority per area unit showed quite a surprising outcome. In each of those 5 groups, they were evenly divided at 20% each. So 20% of the New Zealand population fall in the nought to 14-year category as they do the 60-plus year category. Asking the question of what portion of the Otago region as a whole, so that's the province of Otago, then we see in the younger age group, nought to 14, 4 points off the average, followed by 3 points above the average and so forth. 45 to 59 and 60 plus, nought to similar. Dunedin City as a whole, including Moskyl, nought to 14 drops to 17% and 15 to 29, sorry, yeah, 15%, 15 to 29 escalates to 27% and that is reflective of our student population. 30 to 40 years takes a drop and so on. However, Moskyl is quite special in that it is 2 points above Dunedin City as a whole in the nought to 14. It is considerably lower in the 15 to 29 age group. The 30 to 44 years, 15%. And then as the age increases, climbs from 21 to 34 for the 60-plus age group. So when we're talking about hydrotherapy and things of that nature, looking at which pool would be used by which group. Of course, the lap pool is clearly used by a portion of all of the 5 groupings. The learner's pool, only the nought to 14 perhaps. The leisure pool, about 30 to 45. And the hydrotherapy pool from 15 to 60 plus. And why 15 to 29? Well, that is the sporting rehabilitation and the health aspects of the nature of the pool. Whereas as you tend to the other end of the scale, then it's fairly aging and the aches and pains of bones that we're all wearing out. So that gives you councillors, hopefully, some better understanding of the demographics of our area and will no doubt help you in putting together a picture that has been explained in terms of the speakers before me. Further ado, the Moskyl Taro Community Board urges you, the council, to give due consideration to including in its long-term plan, provision for a 4-pool aquatic facility in Moskyl as proposed by the Taro Community's Facility Trust. Thank you.
councillor Law. I'm just wondering whether the community board presenting today and tomorrow morning, it's obviously going to mention the transport project is under support if you were going to.
The transport for the town centres tomorrow morning.
Are you sure that this is going to meet all the expectations of people you talk about?
In terms of the returns from questions that were answered in the submission document, we have not had the value of having those analysed or the outcome analysis. So we, certain groups of the community call, we do not know. And until such time as we store that information, I don't think we're able to comment.
We very support the Taro Community Facilities Trust and we also acknowledge the huge amount of work that this very committed and competent group is carrying out on behalf of the community. Last year, we worked in partnership with the trust to engage the community as part of the pool feasibility study and we recognise the overwhelming support for the 4-pool facility. There was some discussion about a bit earlier about this being a facility for Moskyl. We believe that the proposed facility would be widely used by citizens who do not live on the Tari. Already, there's numerous people from other Dunedin suburbs who come to Moskyl and use our local facilities. And I've got some examples here, which is just a snapshot that gives examples of people who come to Moskyl. We estimated that there's about 6,000 kid trips each winter for junior soccer and junior rugby. And that's not counting senior sport or tennis or netball or basketball or squash tournaments, bowls tournaments. So that 6,000 is just for the winter for a small group of kids. And as well as that, there's over 1,000 kids travel to Moskyl for the Regbix triathlon each year. A couple of years ago, we carried out a snapshot of 190 children that were using the Memorial Playground. And we discovered that more than half of these children using the playground actually did not live in Moskyl and around Moskyl. Many of our local business owners indicate that significant numbers of their customers do not live in Moskyl. They come from other areas and some of them are what we'd consider the catchment like Brighton, Green Island and Fairfield by whole and middle market, but also many other places. It can be easy for other suburbs to access Moskyl and talking about facilities for South Dunedin, in actual fact, it's easier for people to catch a bus from South Dunedin to Main Street of Moskyl, easier and cheaper than it is to say catch a bus to Moana Pool. And as well, I think we've looked at Google several times, from Sinclair, from Sinclair to Moana Pool is 11 minutes and from Sinclair to Main Street of Moskyl is 14 minutes. So there's very little in it, except of course, hopefully in Moskyl, you don't need to spend several minutes sort of for a half. As previously has been discussed, Moskyl is the fastest growing area in our city and in particular with a particular increase in the number of young families and also the older people.
I represent the primary schools in particular, that 16, 17% that Bill was talking about before. Aquatics is swimming is integral as part of our physical education and health curriculum. It is a real challenge for us to access that swimming pools in Moskyl. We don't have, many of our schools don't have a swimming pool. And in terms of especially that year 5, the old standard 3, there is very little in the way of stretching children's ability. We do have, and I hesitate to use this word, a national standard guide, I prefer to say a national aspiration for what we'd expect of children and that's to swim 50 metres freestyle, 50 metres backstroke, 25 metres breaststroke, 25 metres side stroke and as well as survival skills. The only pool at the moment that we have to do that is the Moskyl Pool. And I'll talk to you in a little while if I may, about why our children strongly agree that Moskyl needs a new pool and I'll talk about that in a minute. We have difficulty even accessing the current pool. As we've said before, people from Green Island and Fairfield come and use the current pool. And with the short term, term 1 and then term 4, that's where we are competing with each other for space in the pool and it is difficult for us to meet the aspirational target of those standards. Also, as was said before, we have a culture in New Zealand of being in and on the water and it is really part of our duty as grown-up people to support children in that endeavour. And we really do need a pool and can I just talk a couple of seconds about the children? As councillor Wilson said, actually, some of our children do think the current pool is boring. They say it's old, doesn't have enough room, there's cold changing rooms, it's not safe for diving and it's very noisy in the rain. They say that a great pool in Moskyl means that families going into town will save money on transport. There are some families that do access Moana Pool for swimming lessons throughout the year. That is quite a small group. There are a large number of our families that find that beyond their means. So having something placed with the American, that children didn't say that, that's me. They said kids in Moskyl will use a new pool more.
It seems to me that it's quite clear that the Tari is the part of the city that's actually grown significantly. And as the council considers what they're going to do with a pool that needs to be upgraded out here, it seems to me that it's, it's not whether the pool needs something happens out here, but actually to what extent. And when you're investing money in capital, you think about the long-term, not just a quick fix. So I urge the council to seriously consider investing in the future. This is the growth area of Dunedin. It's quite clear from this aspect that this is where there's opportunity for growth in terms of subdivisions. There's a high percentage of over 65-year-olds living out here, that's very clear. And indeed, in terms of whether the money is to come in by the hydrotherapy, it's the older people that are using the hydrotherapy pool in town. I've had the opportunity to actually do some action research in the hydrotherapy pool just recently after surgery. And I have, you have the opportunity when you're aquatopping and just exercising to actually talk to the people who use the pool. So we've had our own little Facebook screen where I've actually talked to the various people who use the pool. There's a significant number of people that are actually in their 70s, but actually many in their 80s using that pool. And if you talk to older people out here, there's an awful lot of people that actually don't go into Dunedin at all. They just find the idea of the motorway and travelling to Dunedin actually is a significant barrier when they're quite happy just driving around the streets of Moskyl. So I'm quite sure that actually there's a new wave of people out here that don't have access to a hydrotherapy pool currently that will be very pleased to use it. And it's not a surprise that Chatsworth's got a pool for its people, that's what the people want. The Ministry of Health produced guidelines for physical activity for older people in 2013. And they identified health benefits in physical activity for those with chronic conditions as well as general wellbeing. They used data from the active New Zealand Survey SPARC to find that the types of activities that physically active individuals over the age of 65 undertake. The top 3 activities are walking, gardening and swimming. So we know that the baby boom, the baby boom generation is tending to be more physically active. And I think as we look to the future, the 4-pool proposal, this is the way to go.
councillor Law.
There's been a suggestion, and I appreciate that you have run the survey last year, there's been a suggestion that people were aware where the location of the site was for the Memorial Gardens. And just wondering if you were aware of that when you did the survey or how that was presented to people?
When that question was asked, the site hadn't been, the preferred site hadn't been identified. That's right, isn't it? So at that point, they were just asking about what actually facilities, you know, which were the most, what were the most important to the people in the community? Was it the leisure pool, lap pool, you know, hydrotherapy? So all those things and they were asked to relate them. But that was without any reference to where it would be situated because at that point the trust had actually done that work.
As a ratepayer, resident and a grandparent, I know that the council has had a number of working parties, a large number of reports. It commissioned the report from the trust. It wasn't somebody, the trust came out of a move, somebody commissioned by the council. And I think, you know, there's a lot of people out in the community that are waiting for council to actually get down to make a decision about where they're going. That's what I think. Well, how many studies and reports and that can lead. As a grandparent, I see the pool as being a great place for intergenerational activities. It's a place where we can get with a son, his partner and their children, and sons' children and spend time together. They don't live in Moskyl, they live in Kew. But they'd actually be more happy to come. It's a place that people get together to have fun activities. I'm not a competitive swimmer like David, but I'm a, so I'm not going to make much use of 25 with that pool or the learner's pool. I'm probably more into the hydrotherapy pool. My wife definitely is. She's had a joint replacement. She's got significant arthritis. It's a place they can go to, not just to go to have a swim or to relax in the water, but to actually go for an extended period. And that's the sort of thing I particularly, as a grandparent, I want somewhere I can take grandkids where you can spend half a day there.
Peter Sun.
My name is Peter Sun, as you mentioned. I'm a Dunedin ratepayer and I've lived and worked around Moskyl all my life. I've been involved in many community projects over the years as a member of Lions International, some of these as president. I'd like to take this opportunity to address you regards to the proposed Moskyl Pool. On Tuesday, the 14th of April, I attended a pop-up stand meeting at New World Moskyl and approached councillor Mike Lord to discuss the preferred site as recommended by the pool trust, namely the Moskyl Memorial Gardens. It was a revelation to me to discover that he was not aware that the site preferred would necessitate the destruction of approximately 20% of what remains of the gardens after the building of Wanita, St John's, Dealee Citizens and the service centre. It occurred to me that if he was unaware, then there was a good chance the rest of you councillors are also not informed as to the precise site and the ramifications of the proposition due to the manner and timing in which it was presented by the trust to you and the public at large. And dare I say it, I'm of the opinion that that was not... And dare I say it, I'm of the opinion that that was not unintentional. There appears to be a small group on the trust and/or the community board who are determined to site the proposed new pool as close to the retail sector of Moskew as possible, for reasons best known to them alone, regardless of the wishes of the greater community. In support of this theory, I would like to bring to your attention that the forms, both paper and online, produced by the trust to solicit support for the proposal, did not make mention of their preferred site, the memorial gardens. The first public airing of their preferred site was when the trust presented their feasibility study to council on the fifteenth of December two thousand and fourteen. The trust press statements between the nineteenth of September two thousand and fourteen and fifteenth December two thousand and fourteen, when they were actively seeking support, always quoted Memorial Park as their preferred option instead of Memorial Gardens, which in fact is where their preferred option is situated, further misleading their supporters and the affected public at large. It should be noted that during this same period, any photos supplied to the press were very vague as to the precise location of the intended pool complex. I suggest the majority of supporters were not aware of the potential damage to the gardens when they pledged support. For the trust to claim that they have two thousand two hundred supporters for the proposal is frankly misleading. As but a few chosen few, most had no idea of the site and the ramifications thereof. So we come to the conclusion that of a catchment area of some thirty thousand six hundred affected residents, only a handful of trust and board members were privy to the precise location at the time of the presentation. And then unlike the event that Moskew pool options two, three, or four are adopted in the long-term plan, under or otherwise, in no way can the council, the community board, or the Tari Community Facilities Trust deem they have a mandate to desecrate our memorial gardens, fifty years in making, and used and appreciated by many peoples of all age. Before any decisions are made, I'm quite prepared to meet councillors collectively or individually on-site to make sure you are fully informed as to the ramifications of the proposal.
If you look at the pool complex and it moved directly to the left, that's my way. So I am directly affected, but that is not really my main concern at this point in time. It is the fact that I object to the fact that we're going to lose green space, we're going to lose substantial and mature gardens. And I think it's the council's position now to be protecting things like that, not sacrificing them for other projects. And whilst the trust says that is the preferred site, it does not necessarily rule out other sites, particularly when you consider what you're going to lose there.
You just asked the names of your neighbours, just in case we've got submissions and we can't collate those with those. So who's to the west of your place?
To the west of my place, I can't put a name on this, just changed hands that property. And to the right is a brother of mine.
Russell?
No, another brother. And then if you keep coming down there, then there's another individual, I don't know whose name, and then is Russ? But once again, I would like to point out that this is not really a... Well, obviously I'm upset about it, you can appreciate that. But this initial proposal for a pool started back in, I think it was two thousand and six. And at the stage they were talking about putting it where the Rose Garden was. And I jumped up and down there, and it didn't really directly affect me because I was well screened from it. I object, as I said before, to losing a facility we've already got merely to attain something else that someone else wants. And also bearing in mind, and the trust should take this on board, that those gardens, a lot of them were done with voluntary labour and fundraising, et cetera, not unlike what they're doing. And I would like them to stop and think how they would feel if in ten years' time someone decided to knock the pool over and build something else after the effort they put in.
Do you have any questions? No, that's fine, that's fine. I do appreciate the two issues, but I'm also wanting to understand, I think you'd be able to tell us where the other side is.
There is an interesting point here, and that is that bearing in mind what they're proposing, I'm disappointed that no one has actually approached us at this point in time. And I know everyone says to me when I bring a subject up, they say, "Don't worry about it, let's not set in concrete." But I'm frightened that this thing's going to gain edge and it's going to become accepted as the site.
Thank you. Councillor Adams.
Thank you very much, Peter. I accept what you say that you're going to lose a good chunk of the memorial garden. Is your position that you would prefer a redevelopment on the existing pool site? Or is there some other site that you think would be preferable if it was to go here?
Well, I'm inclined to think that it should go on the existing site. And there are ways of achieving that. The trust wrote it off because of lack of room, et cetera, et cetera. But in this day and age, anything's possible. We've got a camping ground down there, which continues on from where the pool is and heads in a roughly a northerly direction. And then there's an ablution block. Now, if they were to take the camp sites and put them on the other side of the ablution block, and, you know, the infrastructure for moving the camping sites wouldn't be great, then the pool can spread right along to the ablution block. And that's just off the cuff, an idea. But I don't really see, and it's my brief to come up with an alternative. My brief here is looking after the gardens.
But while you have suggested that the existing site would be preferable, and you've shown how it could extend north, there was a suggestion that the Silver Stream could be an issue, like whatever there. Do you think that that's actually the case, or do you think it's a bit of a red?
Well, it hasn't created a problem with the bars that are there, point number one.
It's been there for eighty years.
Yeah, and point number two is the fact that Dunedin's built mostly on reclaimed land, which is subject to water coming up and down on a tidal basis. So in this day and age, if the engineers can't build something there that withstand whatever it is that the trust thinks is going to be a problem, well, it's a cool look at for the engineering.
Thanks, Michael.
Councillor Carter.
Just, I'm sort of quite confused about this memorial park, memorial gardens thing. It says at the top of that picture, Memorial Park.
Yeah, at the top.
Are you saying that we had the initial proposal was as far as you've got?
Well...
So you power the...
The first, yeah, the first indication that we got that they were talking about this as the preferred site, in the press release, there was a dot which was located in the middle of the car park. Now, that's a big difference from where they're talking about putting it down there now, which the whole complex encompasses the gardens. And the other thing that is actually misleading, when you see it and print it like that, you can't see what's underneath it and what you're losing. And a quick count-up that I've done, we're talking upwards of fifty mature trees, which are fifty years old. And that's not just minor vegetation. You know, this is an established garden that's taken years to develop, and you're not going to replace it again in five minutes.
So it's moved out of the road from the, in your view, from the car park to the...
Well, the car park was just a vague indication, this is where we're putting it. Now, far be it for me to say that it was purposely misleading, but it's got all the hall marked as far as I'm concerned. And I also wonder, the support that they claim that they've got, when people become fully aware of what they're going to lose to achieve it, is that support going to be there? And that could reflect on the financial model as well.
Any further questions? Councillor Hawke.
Thank you, and a completely different topic. And your written submission, Peter, and I appreciate your concerns for council finances. In your written submission, you're in favour of the status quo proposal for the Portobello Road Safety Improvements Project, over ten years rather than over three, which is estimated to cost us an extra four point seven million dollars over the life of that project. And I just wondered if you could talk a bit about that?
Yeah, well, I didn't go into great depth on that because it's not a subject that interests me. And I haven't, you know, this has taken up all my spare time getting to the handle on this particular one. But I consider that the likes of the Portobello Road was a plan that was put in place. And I don't see why you've got to start changing the plan when you're halfway through the job, continue on as normal. And that was my initial thinking.
Even if it costs you nearly five million dollars more to do that?
That is a proposition, but then I've got no proof of that, or whether that's a reality, or whether that's someone pushing me or Barrow wanting to get their particular thing done.
Evening councillors, Sport Otago. We support the need for a new pool in Moskew. It's an old pool, and you can keep throwing money at it, and it will still be an old pool. The materials that provide the pool surround are also fairly dated. And no matter of regular maintenance and piece-by-piece upgrading of that will actually improve the experience for those who utilise the pool currently. It's our view that a replacement Moskew pool is required to meet the identified core needs of the residents of the Tari and the wider community. And it will attract patronage and utilisation from surrounding contributing areas, from Khorstafen, Green Island, Fairfield, and as far south as Milton. So it's a much wider catchment than perhaps you may imagine. It will also attract, because of the novelty of a new facility over the first one or two years, more regular use coming up from town. Points been made by a previous speaker about the Swim to Survive Programme operates in wider Dunedin. It is the most successful programme of type in New Zealand. But we're now at the point where that programme is constrained by the lack of water space that we have here in the city. So increasing the water space through a new pool located in Moskew will actually provide greater access to our youth. So as was mentioned by a previous speaker, it will provide for greater school utilisation, and it will provide for the ageing population within the Moskew and wider catchment. So the need exists. However, the issue of the number of pools is something that needs further discussion, more collaboration, more dialogue with the Tari Facilities Trust. Based on current and projected population, and yes, there's a fifteen percent growth currently taking place in this area, we would assess, along with Sport New Zealand submission, which you also have in front of you, that it meets the criteria for a two-pool complex. So that's based on current and future population trends. There are a number of similar facilities, both in the planning stage and that have been completed within the South Island. White Par District Council are at concept stage and costing stage of a twenty-five metre pool and learner's facility alongside an existing outdoor pool. That's costed at six point five million. That includes the pool surround, the building that goes around it, and all the associated amenities, changing rooms, et cetera. Dalmaine Pool and Christchurch, which is the home of the Christchurch Swim Club, rebuilt as a result of the earthquake, again creating an indoor facility. Twenty-five metre pool and lunar pool, four point five million. So they're the sort of cost range that, along with Sport New Zealand, we can feed into the equation to assist. In terms of the site, without getting into the debate about the pros and cons of where it should be, councillors are probably aware that the current site beside the Silver Stream, when it's flooded, has created issues for the existing pool. And if you're going to site a pool there, then you need to be very aware of those flood issues. I think you've got an opportunity, if you decide to take it, to locate the pool closer to an existing facility such as the Moskew Stadium. That's largely underutilised. And by co-locating, you can get some synergies between the two facilities where they feed off each other, and you breathe light back into the Moskew Stadium. You can develop shared meeting spaces and other recreational spaces alongside your pool. That's really all we have to say, without going into too much more detail. If you have any questions?
Councillor Tom.
John, the figures that you're quoting, if you look at the lap pool and the lunar pool up there, it's, I'm guessing it's about sixty percent of the floor area, roughly. And you're suggesting from those couple of examples you quoted that the costing for that's less than half of the proposed pool pool option. And that's one side of the equation. The other side of the equation is the revenue to cost structure, the operational costs. Do you have any information around those, how that factors out in those couple of examples?
Certainly with the estimates for the White Par Pool, it's based on about a one point nine million ongoing operation, of course.
But you don't have a revenue?
No, but we'd probably provide that, we can certainly do some more research and feed that into the discussion.
Because I mean, that's one of the big issues here, isn't it? The trust is saying, well, we've got a, there's a significant revenue earn around these other two pools. And the total equation that comes, we've got to lock out, is not just capital cost, but what the cost is over the long term in terms of operational versus capital cost.
Increased utilisation will certainly increase your revenue. But converse also increases your operating costs.
Sure, and it's fine to get, I think that ratio is important.
Councillor Wilson.
John, this is, I've said for my, in a friend that I thought you'd come and speak at, and you've been really passionate about working partnership with communities. And you, I think, supported things like Pika, after two of the funds coming from Pika, and the stadium with the, to partnership funding. If the suggestion here is that it's four pools and you actually funded it, or it's two pools and the council does the whole lot, which one would you be supporting, because I'm a bit vague on there?
I'd have to say at this stage, our inclination would be for the smaller sized complexes.
And the council pays for the whole lot?
No, I still believe that there's an aspect of community ownership and community involvement in such a facility. I think there's an opportunity there, looking at the options you have before you to work closer with the trust, to work out an optimum size, an optimum facility that meets both the needs of Tari and wider community. We don't see that it's council's role entirely to fund everything.
Thanks, John.
I'm here to speak, and I guess with various hats on, I'm here to speak as a mother, I've got three children, but also I'm also the deputy chair of the trust. But firstly, I would like to speak, I guess, as a parent and somebody who is very passionate about my children learning to swim. We've talked before, we've heard from plenty of speakers, I mean, that's the New Zealand psyche, is that we holiday, you know, at the beach, at the lake, you know, by the river. And I have, for weeks on end, you know, years on end, along with hundreds, probably thousands of parents, gone over the hill for my children to have swimming distance, because as babies, as toddlers, there is no facility, even when the Moskew Pool is open, there is no facility here where they can learn to swim. And I have battled to find car parks. I know of plenty of parents who haven't even made their child's swimming lesson because they can't even get a park. And by the time they've parked, they've got the kid out of, one out of the car seat, you know, and got in, the swimming lesson's gone. And, you know, I've done the rush from three o'clock to race in town to get there by half past three for the first swimming lesson, trying to schedule, you've got, I've got three children all at different levels, trying to schedule them, you know, all at the same time. I mean, it's just a nightmare, and I'm not the only parent who experiences that. And I just think, you know, we've heard about the capacity issues, but, you know, as a user of that capacity, I mean, it's a real issue. And, you know, as my children have got older, or even when they were younger, when they're not in a lesson, what do they do? They go into that leisure pool, I mean, they want, we want them to have big confidence around water, we want them to practise their skills. I mean, now, I've got an older one who plays water polo, and when he's not playing water polo, he's in that leisure pool. I mean, it's not just, I don't see it as an and/or option, I mean, they're doing... I mean, they're doing that, he's hurt his knee, what does he want to do? He wants to be able to, you know, rehabilitate that knee, and he wants to be able to do aqua jogging, whatever. It's not just the older people who are going to access that. And it's, um, it's interesting, I think, you know, we've had probably the best son of them that my kids have remembered, um, and by choice, they don't want to go to the Moskill Pool to cool down. I mean, I live at North Tari, we've had thirty-five, forty degree days, and they would see that, even though the Tari River was so low, they would prefer to go, you know, to Altrum Glen than to go to the Moskill Pool. If it was still open with it shutting at four o'clock, I mean, it's still been, you know, six o'clock at night, that's rarely when they want to be going for a swim. I mean, the hours are not even conducive to be able to, um, you know, have a good swim. And I just think, we, there's an untapped demand out there. I mean, as they get older, I mean, there's nowhere for them to make their mates, you know, as, as something in the community. I mean, yes, there's the library, but that's, you know, there's only one thing. What else, what else can our teenagers do? I do think it's something that we want to be looking at, at providing in our community. And, um, with my trust hat on, I've been one of the ones who's, you know, spoken to various community groups, I've spoken to, to sports clubs, our junior rugby, our junior soccer, they have the biggest numbers of all of those, um, those sports codes in Dunedin, and they just think the location is perfect, you know, on a, on a rainy night, they won't have to cancel practice, they'll take their whole team into the pool. I mean, I just think we're just missing a huge opportunity, you know, to look elsewhere. We've looked, yes, we've looked at lots of locations, and that location, yes, it's in Memorial Gardens, but I have sat for hours in that car park while my kids are at athletics or at soccer practice, and nobody, or very few people actually utilise that part of the gardens. It's, it's, it's basically sitting there, yes, I hear Mr Sim laughing behind me. I know, um, Michael Steadman, who, you know, he does send his apologies, I think many of you are aware of his health challenges at the moment, he himself has gone in at all times of the day and sat and observed how little people have used that. He has met with Mr Sim on a number of occasions and, and talked through the issues with that. And no matter where the location of the pool is, you know, you can't satisfy everybody, but we believe that that is the best location, um, that meets the majority of the needs of our community. And, um, having stood on the, you know, sports sidelines, in the New World Car Park or wherever, to get submissions and talk to people about the location, when you explain, people are aware of that location in there, and they, they all comment, saying, "We don't use that, that, that part of the gardens is not a utilised space." And they all believe that that is the best location. Of the people that I've talked to, and a lot of those form submissions that you've received, I personally have stood and talked to people through it, and they've, they understand what the issue is, and they're really supportive of the community working together with the council. It's, you know, if they haven't ticked the box, if they, if they honestly don't, don't support, if they think the council should fund the whole lot. I mean, I think any member of the trust who's actually been out there with the submissions have explained that and the location, um, to those submitters. And an interesting point earlier on was made about, you know, the existing pool. You know, a cash-strapped council doesn't want to put, putting more money into a pool that is already, by your own reports, at the end of its useful life. I mean, why extend it? We, yes, and we've looked at that location for a new pool, and there are major issues with Silver Stream. And Mr Brimble will remember, as I do, being at council, when they had to shorten the pool because, I mean, the bottom of it is cracked. I thought I was right, and so, I mean, there is, there is issues with the existing site. And, um, many of you are aware, I mean, my, and years ago, I used to work at the council, and one of my roles was sitting there, you know, listening to annual plan hearings and, and being, you know, going to, um, public meetings, and never, any project I've been involved in has there not, I have found, I mean, this is the only project has such huge community support. Not one person who I have approached has said absolutely no. They might not agree with the location, they may not agree with it being a community council partnership, but not one person has said absolutely not. They've all agreed that this is something that this community absolutely needs. And I think that is so unusual in history, I mean, I don't know how long I've been at council, a long time ago, um, and some of you were there, at that, around that table, councillor Buzet, um, and councillor Bensapoke, who is rejoined. And I just think that we've got a moment in time, and I just think the council would be very remiss to miss this moment in time, we, we have got the community behind us. And I think Irene mentioned, you know, you've got to build on that momentum, that we, we have already identified people who are willing to give. We don't know whether they're going to be willing to give in two years, five years, ten years' time. And so many of the people who I've talked to have said, you know, when will council hear what we're saying? How many times do we have to submit? They've filled in an online survey, they've turned up to public meeting and public meeting, you know, they've filled in a submission to the LPTP, and they just say, "At what point are council going to hear us?" They've got plenty of other projects that they haven't required the community to keep telling them that they've wanted to do, like upgrading the central city paving. They're saying, "Well, how long do we have to keep telling the council?" And I just think, you know, we really need to grasp it, the, the trust have said, "We're in for the four pool option, we'll fundraise for it first." And I just think, why not take that opportunity now and, and signal to the community that you are behind the trust?